Okay, time being 7:05. I call a Halifax Plant and Boarding Discussion. All members present except for Marc Milius. On the agenda, we have appointments at 7 o'clock, Zero Mont Ponce Street. Amanda Monte, Temporary Site Plan. 7:15 informal discussion for 416 Plymouth Street, Halifax Park Plaza. 7:30 discussion, Twin Lake Liquors, 657 Mont Ponce Street. Under discussions, we have Josh Liddell. 285 Home Street, Halifax Meadow, Lyden Lane, Removal of Rogary Parking Spaces. Pasture Lane, Status. Don't have any bills. And we have meeting minutes to approve for November 4th, 2021, and December 2nd, 2021, and miscellaneous correspondence. Do I have a motion to accept the agenda as read?
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as read.
Motion seconded.
Seconded.
Motion seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Okay, first up is Zero Mont Ponce Street.
Just gonna look through the files and see if we received anything, okay?
There she is.
Don't worry. You okay? Good. Joanne, just to let you know, I made copies of everything, and there's copies on marks that you could probably take of the emails that we talked about.
Oh, right here?
Right here.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
You bet.
The song?
Yeah.
The big one? Are we sharing this?
Um...
We have a copy.
Yeah.
We had that last meeting, wait.
So, I'm confirming that the only boards that gave us any information on 959 or 6, what is it? 959 is the building inspector. Did I just not say that yet? Were you with the board the other night? So they just looked at it the other night, probably? Okay. Do you want to see what they wrote?
Of course.
Yeah, so, did you see this?
I saw the note on there, but I...
Oh, okay.
I didn't see where he...
Yeah. Yeah.
I'm completely fine.
Okay. I don't think there's anything...
No, I can order one.
Okay. I think that's all that matters to do with the current plan.
Everybody have a draft of the board plan?
We know of the plan the last time. I'm just looking at this site plan review checklist.
What are you guys doing with trash and disposal right now?
There really isn't trash there, but if there is, we, you know, give a trash company an I O S if they need it to, it's not a big deal. There's no trash there.
Okay. Just asking.
So who's going to dumpster on site?
And I imagine you're not going there after dark with no lighting and everything left out.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask, because I normally have almost as many waivers as there are on the site plan included as far as waiver requests.
That's kind of what I was thinking, but just looking through them to see, because this is a temporary site plan, they're saying they're gonna come back in May, right? And I imagine that that one would have lighting and things like that in it? Probably a dumpster. So what do we do about peer review, since that's something that we usually do? When we have things in front of us, do we... I think, I think that we haven't ever not done it. Go on.
Yeah, I mean, we do send it out. I mean, the only thing that I can say is what we allowed with Liddell and then...
Yeah, Liddell, you didn't have to have a peer review.
Right, and then we can't get him back, so it's like, that doesn't work.
We agreed last time because it was temporary that we weren't going to do that for this particular...
Look at the struggle we're going through with Liddell.
Well, he got a building permit, that's what he wanted, so...
Well, it'll be the same thing, you know, you get the building permit and then move on down.
Can I ask, I don't know whose property, is it listed as a temporary or is it... So it's different situations, but I'm just...
Yeah, but we're just discussing the site plan, so, you know, that's...
We've been trying to get him in. I just emailed him again this week to try to get him in.
Understood, but what he does isn't what I'm going to do.
We're just trying to create consistency and find out where our...
This one's pretty cut and dry. It's a temporary site plan, just to make smooth things out for now until next year when you decide to do something else.
Correct. My father, he had given you permission to talk to Dan Lloyd. I don't know if you reached out to him or not.
No, I didn't.
Because he would confirm...
But he didn't have anything to do with throwing this site plan, right?
Correct, he's doing the bigger picture, working with Levy as well.
Well, I mean, the concern here is the runoff right now going into the wetlands, and there isn't anything on here that shows that it's gonna mitigate that.
As far as, there's still, the Conservation Commission came unexpected in.
Did you get any letters from the Conservation that could help us out right now?
Um, no.
Did you submit a plan there?
I'm sorry?
Did you submit a plan there?
Yes, of course, and then I resented the whole memo. We haven't heard that, but one of the, it was in, he went out and checked out the whole silksides around the whole type of property.
Well, I mean, I think maybe if we had a copy of that plan here too. Of the one that was submitted to the Conservation.
Well, it's essentially the same thing without this, but...
Right, but what gets submitted to the Conservation and stamped...
You can certainly, I can certainly get you a copy of that, that's what I...
Yeah, we can get it from the Conservation.
Right.
Joanne, we didn't receive anything from Conservation at all, huh?
So is the normal protocol to have this sent out to an engineer to review, and then they come back and they tell us what's good, what's in parameters, and what needs to be fixed?
Yep.
And that's not what that is? Right?
Correct. That's not what we're looking at. This is their plan.
What's an engineer gonna look at on this plan? There's no drain, there's just nothing, this is pretty much...
I'm just asking a question.
Last time, to fill you in, we agreed that we weren't going to do the peer review for the temporary, is the way I remember it.
I know what you call that, but I don't remember talking about the peer review at all.
That's what the scheduled meeting was for. Wasn't that a meeting agenda lesson?
It was just this site plan review.
I thought it was to pick the peer review engineer, if I remember correctly. Review engineer vote.
Right.
And then we decided that we weren't going to because it was temporary and we got people in May.
So I guess...
Review engineer vote, and we couldn't vote because we didn't have 30 days, and review engineer, that...
I don't think that was...
Review eng... It's right here.
No, I know, but I don't think that the peer review thing was for today, so everyone could fill their...
I was just asking a question, if that's, if that's what the precedent is, is that if we have a site plan, whether it's temporary or permanent, if, I'm asking the board as a lack of knowledge, if the protocol, as far as what precedent has already been set to do that, or what precedent we're trying to set moving forward, is that that needs to be officially...
Site plans normally go out for site, for review. The Liddell thing, that was an existing site plan, that was a modification of site plan, so the original site plan had gone out for review, so...
So this has not gone out?
So this has not gone out, so that's where we're at.
Original site plan went out for review? What original site plan?
For that building that Liddell's.
What, when Jim Black built it?
Right.
I mean, not to cross paths here, but we're not talking about Liddell, right? So, in regards to this, only because, you're right, I wasn't here last time, apologize for not being here for that, but...
That's okay.
Isn't it kind of basic to stay within the bylaws of what we're supposed to do, just to say?
Create consistency.
Again, I'm not saying it one way or another, I'm, again, I'm asking for the people who have more, more experience than I do. Do site plans go out to engineers to tell us whether it's good or not? I guess that's the question. I thought that's why we had engineers.
Well, I'm missing that all, but, since it's just temporary, I don't see why you have to go through all of that.
When we discuss it, I look for this...
And what is the, you know, where is the operation that's going on now? Because you don't understand, right?
No, I don't. But I'm only one vote, or one person, so...
No, no, it's completely...
Just to bring them up to speed.
The plan exactly, do you have one over there?
Yeah, I have a smaller version of it.
Yeah, I can't see it on you as well. Here's yours, please.
Maybe slow it up for a minute? That'd be better.
So we have parking, loom, screen loom area, fresh concrete area, and a stump pile with a tug grinder.
Okay.
And it's all, this is all on silkside. And all down here, this is all gravel, all stone.
Got it. Okay. Are you looking for me to...
No, just you and you are just like...
Yeah, no, that's fine.
Bring you up to speed.
Yeah, no, I... It's fine. My question wasn't necessarily, I guess, what was going, what was going on there as proposed, it was just, what's our protocol for having these things approved? That's all. That was my question. And there was more towards that than...
I'm just asking a question.
Any more discussion?
I think the motion we approved it.
Is there a second?
I make a motion that we send it out for peer review so that we can keep on being consistent with everything that we do from here on out and never ever let it go.
Well, there's a motion on the table, so we have to deal with the motion first.
All right, well, I don't second.
So is there a second for the motion?
Can I ask a question before I second or don't?
Of course.
The difference between a temporary site plan and a permanent site plan, why would one go out to an engineer and not the other? Like, in other words, if we approved this one without it going to an engineer to tell us what we would do for another site plan, what does that, how does that impact the future site plan? That they're gonna come back with in May?
Well, I think, I think one of the questions would be, temporary site plan, does it have a timeframe on it?
Okay, so what would the downside be to having that sent out to an engineer for a, for a site plan? For them to do the official review, or peer review?
There shouldn't be anything.
Other than just a time delay?
Yeah, I don't, I don't see there's any, any big deal about it.
And then, um...
But, but my question is, is because it's been said that this is a temporary, so at least timestamp in this, it's temporary until May of 2022?
It's another way that we could do it.
And then it's done?
I'm kind of there.
That's, that's, I find that to be a fair way, I would, I would go for that. Can you adjust your motion?
What was that now? What was that again?
To put a deadline on...
It's a temporary, and it runs out in May of 2022.
Sure.
And then the new site plan for something more permanent needs to be done?
I understand the peer review, all of that.
You know, of course, when they come out the new site plan with buildings and everything else, of course it has to go up. I think sending it off for peer review right now is just gonna drag things on for no reason, really.
I think, to be honest, I thought that's what we discussed last time. So I'm completely fine with putting, okay, this is the date that says the temporary's over. I'm completely fine with that, I found it to be fair.
I would be fair with that.
I just think that that's...
Well, I mean, if you say temporary, it's gonna have...
A timestamp on it, 100%. I just, again, for the lack of, and hopefully I can stop referring to my, my lack of experience here after a certain amount of time.
Asking questions is awesome, because then we all learn, and then anybody listening gets it too.
So I would just say that if, to your point of having create consistency and not setting a precedent in the wrong direction, like other situations that we've dealt with, if that's what we do, is usually send it out to an engineer, but if this is just temporary and it has a timestamp on it, does it have to be May? Can it be sooner than that? Is there any reason why it wouldn't be sooner than that?
Over the winter months, so...
Okay.
Are you gonna be developing the rest of the plan over the winter? I imagine that would be a good...
We'd be working on the plans, right?
Yeah, yeah. That's probably like one of your big winter projects.
Would there be any downside to doing a temporary, waiving the, how long does it take if you were to send this out?
It's gonna tell you not much is gonna go on there in the winter right away.
No, I know, but how long would it take for that plan to go out to an engineer and be back? Would you have to come back next month?
Well, it would have to be at least the next meeting, I mean...
So that's two weeks from now? December 2nd?
Yeah, we don't know what the engineer's timeframe is.
Is also the reason because if we don't approve this today, then you can't get up and running with your operation? Is that, is there a temporary suspension of operation here? Got it.
And we came in with a temporary, we discussed everything last time, so I think...
I'll add on to your motion.
So I choose a motion to accept it until...
May 1st.
May 1st, is that, okay.
2022.
Does that work, or you wanna...
We do the end of May, just...
End of May, May 30th? At the end of May, I don't, 30, 31, I don't know.
All right, so there's a motion, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, any other discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Aye.
Aye.
You're welcome.
So I will order the, what apply you have for...
And, and the building inspector said that you have to get a building permit for that container.
Yeah, so, Joanne, is there anything in email, he goes, the corresponding, the border health, I've sent the letter, it's low...
Here, Amanda, I'll give you, I'll give you the building inspectors right here.
So basically, one way or another, by June 1st, you have to come with something that has been seen and developed by the engineer.
That's building. I don't have the border health one, but...
That's okay, I can correct what you said in...
Take a picture with your phone.
Right.
Then you don't have to worry about it. Do you have the border health one?
I need the plan that he put the, he was writing on the opening.
Yeah. I can PDF it if you can. It's on both scanners. It's the one with the border part. The plan with the border part.
It's all right, I can...
No, we might as well get it done.
You have the plan?
Yeah, with the border part on it. If you put it on the floor, you can get a really good...
Got it. Thank you.
Can I give you a tip? Take the whole thing, so that you have all the dates.
Oh, yeah, no, I have copies of those at home.
Yeah, but it'll just show that that's on this plate. You know what I mean?
That should prevent the other situation that we're dealing with, with not being able to get said person back in front of us, right? Now is an actual harm.
Thank you.
Okay.
And, application? Can I ask?
That's a good reminder. Informal discussion for 416 Plymouth Street.
State, oh, yeah.
Good.
Patrick Maloney.
Pardon?
Patrick Maloney.
Hi.
Oh, yeah.
Good. We're just looking for an update of what's going on out there, aside?
So we're working on the leaching field.
Yep.
And it's over a year to get done, but, and then we have to, drainage areas to put in, so...
And then you're just cleaning up the rest of the site?
Yeah, so the, I don't know if you know the background or not, I can fill you in on details if you want, so...
Work copy?
Yes.
I have a lot of copy of the...
Yeah, I can see.
Of the leaching field, but it's in it. So our original leaching field goes all the way up to here, somewhere in somebody's front lawn, so it led to a discussion and an argument, so we decided to try and find a location in our site which was back in here. So that led that we had to go through Conservation and everything else, because we had to do a wetland crossing, and clear this so we could actually put a road in, so when Joe was doing that, I said, see if we can clean this up and get rid of the water that was standing right here. So then we were able to clear up this whole area, make our road into the leaching field, and then relocate that wet into basically a retention basin or, relocate the wet area, basically.
A road?
We had to put a road in here, yeah, just a gravel road so we can cross it, because it's so wet, because we had to take all the sand and stuff back here. So the, the new leach field is approximately around here.
Okay, that's, we've converted, we've converted to...
We haven't really converted into anything yet, but the previous inspector, we talked to him about it, of what we could do here, because it was an old, um...
Treatment.
Yeah, exactly, water treatment plant, so we talked to him about what we could do, because I didn't know, like, for zoning or anything else, so he said, we depend on what you put in here, and then, that's why the, it would go through planning and zoning, I was told at that stage, as far as what would be allowed in here. It's the same zoning as what we have in the plaza here.
Right.
Commercial. So that's, that's what, so again, we didn't, we had a lot of vacancies here, and a lot of underutilized areas, because, again, we didn't have the leaching field.
Right.
So hopefully, by the time we do that, that's the reason we have the signs up trying to get some interest.
Yep.
So...
Okay.
Yeah.
So as you go to use that, you're gonna come back to it?
Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. So I was told I would need a site plan and everything else, an application for that, and it would depend on the use.
Yep.
So, because every, I, I get, every use would have a code review, right, as far as...
Yeah, we have, we have a pretty stringent parking requirement, so...
Yeah, 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 so, and that's what he said, it would depend on what you tried to put in there as far as parking and everything else.
Right.
So...
Based on the total use of the...
Exactly, yeah, 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 yeah.
How come we don't have the rest of it where you put in the road and all that? Do you have this...
That's on the, I can get you a copy of that if you want to, that's on the, on the...
Septic, for septic.
Septic, yeah, yeah, but I can get you that.
Please.
Yeah. So, and it's only a gravel road, actually, the gravel road doesn't even show what's going on. I can have drawn in if you want to see it. It's just gonna be to maintain the field, because we also have to put a chamber back here, so we'll have to pump that chamber.
Okay. Any questions, Rick?
No.
Nope.
Good, awesome.
Thank you for coming in.
No problem, so I hope I didn't blow up your calls, I know everyone's trying to find out what's going on, but it's not that much more interesting.
So I'm the only one that's interested in seeing the road, I guess?
Yeah, it's, it's just a gravel, and it goes right at the backside here and goes right up to about here.
It's just gonna be their access to...
Yeah.
To build the system.
Exactly, yeah, that's all.
And then maintain it.
Yeah.
Where right now, the septic system's off a part, it's, it's way...
Yeah.
So, do we have an application in on this, or no?
No, it hasn't got to that point.
Yeah, no, just for the, yeah, so, so once I hopefully get a tenant for here, then we'll be back again, and we'll have to draw a parking, whatever, as you guys will require for that, so...
Okay.
I was, I was under the impression that we would be seeing more of what was going on in the entire property tonight, not just some of it. I was, I was under the impression that we would be seeing more of what was going on in the entire property tonight, not just some of it.
We're just cleaning up the rest of it.
Yeah, if I knew you needed that, I would have brought you the, the one that is with the health department for the retention bond and the, oh, sorry, the, leaching field and then the cleaning of this area that went to Concon. I'm gonna drop it off from one.
Please.
Okay.
Alright.
Awesome.
Thank you very much, Rick.
Merry Christmas. And then there were none.
Alright, next up, we have, um, twin lakes.
Um, I just drove by there and, um, I'll send around some pictures, I.
You gotta discuss, I don't wanna.
You gonna recuse yourself?
Recuse myself.
So I went by, and I, I did go by, like, last week and, I think it was last week, but, you know, after the last meeting and it was short fence, but it's there, just like you said.
Short fence, what do you mean?
There wasn't, this length back here wasn't all the way across, so they probably just hadn't finished, can you see this?
Yeah, I went by it, I go by.
Okay, I'm, I'm just showing you that, I just wanted to make sure that we covered it and did everything, so she, um, I sent her the emails that Jamie had, on twelve eight and twelve thirteen, I think it was, and, um, I tried to, um, talk to Patel, but, again, it's all, it's all done, so hopefully Jamie's good.
Well, they're not here, so I'll be soon happy.
You're that, I just realized that it wasn't gonna go anywhere, right? I mean, you can't, can't buy a house next to a commercial property that has a light on, look outside your second floor bedroom window and get pissed that you can see the light.
This is true.
Right? I mean, I can see those lights, those are shining through the window right now, that doesn't mean, you know, but, I think, I mean, that fence looks nice.
Yep.
That's an expensive, uh, expensive fence to have, be put up the whole line of your property for, for free.
So I'll just, um, check in with her and say, I drove by, I don't see anything, I mean, that's eighty feet, right? Looks like it, I didn't get out and measure it, but it looks like it.
I'm surprised you didn't get out with a tape measure. I would have pictured you to do that.
Thanks.
Your diligent is what I meant.
I know, I'm just kidding. Um, so I think, I think that should be good. I mean. Um, and, uh, just to, well, I guess we'll wait till Gordon to get back. Gordon, you back in?
Yeah.
Seven thirty nine? Jimmy, and I'll send you those pictures too, okay?
Thank you.
You bet.
Okay. Josh Liddell.
So I emailed him again and he said the.
I have to recuse.
Musical chairs. So I, um, emailed him about the drainage calculations and I plan on doing, um, a little bit further again, um, maybe going down to talk to him to see what we can do.
Can I say something, uh, towards it? You know, one thing that's come up, um, recently is lights, they decorated the place with lights and it's just.
Christmas lights?
No, lights, I mean, outdoor lighting that just, it lights up my house and my garage and the railroad tracks and, you know, we've been through that before with other businesses that they can't go past the law line, so they would have torn them down. They actually shut one off that was shining, lighting up my daughter's house next to the crossing tracks. Was my house, my daughter was in, and, uh, they actually shut that one off, cause my son-in-law once said something to them. And he mentioned that they're, you know, they're gonna, you know, meet the bylaws and not exceed the law lines and they said they take care of what they have, so, I mean, they, I don't see why they have the need to light, to light the place up like it's an industrial park. You know, one thing I'm hoping that a board or somebody can, can take consideration, it's a unique piece of industrial zone property in the middle of residential. So it'd be nice if they could just, um, it seems like, you know, we're the only brother saying anything about it, I don't know why, but, um, they gotta try to,
Alright.
You know, deal with the brothers a little bit, even though, like I said, I guess nobody else cares.
Okay, I'll make.
Stuff like that, you know, lighting should be on the site plan, when they finally come up with a real site plan.
I'll make a motion to have the, um, site plan updated with light, lighting and the drainage calculations and that we would like to see it by our second meeting in January.
Okay.
And one thing I wanna address is, you know, this isn't a personal vendetta between me and Liddell, but you mentioned a lot when you were here last time, it's just, you know, you approved the site plan so they could put up their addition in the building that doesn't meet any of the conditions of the site plan. So that's why we're having problems now. Cause I even wanted to go over review, I mentioned that, when you approved the site plan, you said no, and here we are.
Well, and we just went through it again.
Yeah, so.
Which is the danger part, well, we'll never do that again, and, and I, I won't even do it on a tenth ever again.
You know, like, I guess, you know, Gordon, you mentioned they had a site plan from, like, Black put it up, but since then, they cleared over, you know, an acre and a half, two acres of land and pad packed it and they got serious drainage problems and everything now.
Alright.
That's, it's a whole different animal, a whole different site plan.
So that brings me back to our last subject on who was just here. Why aren't we talking about how much they cleared out and all the drainage calculations that are changing for that and a road going in, like, it's, it's, it's not consistent, that's what my problem is. If we're gonna be caught telling Liddell that they need to do things, then on the last site plan, we need to make sure that they do those things and you weren't for that. And on ninety five nine, you weren't either, so how does that get consistent and, so that's what I'm talking about, if we're not gonna be consistent and we're gonna be nitpicky on what we're gonna be consistent about, then that doesn't make any sense whatsoever, we're gonna be fighting things all along. If it's the same plan every single time, then we won't have these problems. We have to pick up from here and my opinion is, is that we should never let it go ever again. Because here we are, and, and we just did it and you were for it, so don't, don't go too far on it, because I'm heated right now, because.
He's heated what?
Because it's different than what it was on the last two for you, right now.
We talked about.
You didn't care about going to peer review for ninety five nine, or?
Because it's just temporary, you're gonna be back next year into a whole new.
But, but this is the whole.
Dragging it on, then what's the sense in doing anything?
But if we do peer review every single time, then we don't have any problems such as this, because we're consistent on everything and you wouldn't have this problem and nobody would have this problem.
What problem?
Well, the problem, no, I'm not meaning.
It's not me, it's the board, you people approved a bogus site plan for Liddell so he can get his building permit, that's what it comes right down to.
I have no relationship with Liddell either, and I'm saying that consistency has to say something.
How many, how many, how many conditions on that site plan meet it?
Are you, how do we even know what the peer review is on ninety five nine, or?
Oh, there's no peer review on Liddell either.
You weren't for it.
I went for it, I saw problems with the site plan, but you ignored everything I had to say.
I didn't.
And you ignore, yes, you did, you approved the site plan.
No, I actually, I put in the explanation.
Steve Haywood's concerns.
No, those came in after, and I did, and I, those came in after, and I did say that somebody has to come back for drainage, um, calculations. It doesn't matter, I still put it in there, I consider what you say, I'm just saying, I mean, I'm not trying to fight with you, Rick, I'm trying to say, point being, we're not being consistent and it needs to start happening for everyone, no matter what. You know what I mean? To stop the problems, not to, I'm not trying to, like, I'm just saying, like, I'm not heated at you, I'm heated because this is up, that, right here in the next conversation where the opposite of everything that just happened in the last two. Do you see what I'm saying now? We, we, we should go to peer review on everything, do you hear what I'm saying?
The same, the same way you had the, Liddell's meeting, you sent, um, Bilad out for peer review, everything out for peer review, but not Liddell.
I didn't think it was gonna be a problem and I stand corrected and I understand when I'm wrong and don't mean.
But what I had to say, it meant nothing, you didn't.
Are you kidding me? I actually prefaced my emotion to put it in there, so I do care, and I've been following up with it without you telling me anything, did you actually notice that? Did you see the email I put in front of you today? I'm trying to follow up with it, so don't sit here and say that I'm not for what you are, I am sticking up for you. I already have an X plan, I already have an X plan, I have a motion on the table right now to have him come in here by the second meeting in January, did you hear that one? I'm trying to get him back in here and remedy this, I am all for every single person being treated exactly the same.
Alright.
I think that's the only way that we're gonna be able to avoid these conflicts in the future.
I a hundred percent agree, cause it's just making me mad, I'm like, alright, here we are talking about how we should have done one and then we didn't ask for one on something else.
Which I was at that meeting and I did either second or vote aye, so you're right, I was a part of that. It was, well, there's not gonna be an issue with the drainage, we don't know yet, so, if there is a problem with the drainage, then we'll have you come back and you agree to come back, right? And he said yes, he said yes.
Also, that would work, that would work very well too, right?
So that's the point, and then over there, hold on, and then when we first walked in to this first thing that was on our agenda today, I was asking questions and you kept pushing as to why we didn't need it to send it to peer review, so I think that's her point, is sometimes if we don't like the idea or we don't like the person, it's not personal or whatever it is, or it is personal or it's not personal, it's like, the only way that the board can work consistently is to say, if you're gonna put a site plan in front of us, you gotta go to peer review, and that avoids this conversation with you, it avoids zero monpondant to say, go get it, come back in two weeks, see you then.
Yep.
Right, so, I guess, you've made a motion to have him back here in the second meeting or, or in two weeks. I've seconded it.
Yep.
So now we have to send it out that they've been, they've been requested.
Yep.
Their presence has been requested with a site plan.
With lights on it now and, and drainage calculations and it's due by January twentieth.
And hopefully that'll bury this.
I'm trying to put it to bed for you.
I don't want to see this dragging on anymore either, I'm getting tired of it.
Well, I'm trying to put it to bed, so the motion's on the table and it's lights and everything.
I do think that now seeing this, I wish this conversation happened first. Cause if this conversation happened first, I wouldn't have asked the amount of questions that I asked about zero monpondant, I would have said, well, to avoid that, then we should have just done this. It's just hard to have conflicting conversations amongst ourselves.
Yep.
To stay consistent, because everybody's gonna know somebody and everybody's gonna want somebody that's friends with somebody or something to be pushed through, and unfortunately, I'd, I would, I would, I would have changed my, I would have changed my second, or you seconded, I would have changed my aye, say, sorry, to avoid your concern about Liddell for somebody else that's in a butter, to zero monpondant coming in and, and being upset the way that you're upset about Liddell, we need to send them to peer review.
Yep, I a hundred percent agree.
But that's over and done with, so now we're just saying, let's move on so that we don't have to bitch, excuse my, we don't have to complain to each other anymore.
Yep, agreed, hundred percent. Motion on the table?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I hope that helps.
Well, my whole thing about this is that, you know, if you looked at this, there's more checks on the not than there are on the on, included.
What's that?
Zero monpondant.
Oh, we're back, are we all done with Liddell?
Yeah.
So I can come back?
Yes.
No, but I'm just, I'm just saying, so, I mean, to your, to your point about Liddell's not getting a full site plan review, this, this doesn't get anything. I mean, there, there isn't any talk about drainage on their plan.
Well, there isn't really, I couldn't see any drainage, there's no, there's no need of any drainage, there's nothing.
And what's coming off the piles?
There's nothing going.
What's coming off the piles, where's that going? It's, it's not on there.
Isn't that all conservation?
No, it's not conservation, cause if it's drainage coming off of there, it's, what, what's gonna mitigate that? It's not supposed to be running off into that. I mean, a silt, silt sock, I mean, that's not, that doesn't, that doesn't fit our site plan, silt sock. That's all I'm saying, I mean, in, in timeframe, they've been operating down there anyways. So, I mean, they, they, they got, from the building inspector, they got a temporary for sixty days and then he gave them another sixty days, so I mean,
Yeah.
You know, if, if we took two, if we took it two weeks out, I mean, that's not, it, it, it's so uncommon for this board to ever give a site plan the first time around without having them come back.
So now we've done it twice.
Twice.
We've done, we've done it twice and we won't do it again, that's.
Amen.
I mean, you know, I just.
We have to.
I guess I felt as though the, the, putting the expiration date on it, a hard expiration date on it would have helped, but I guess I should have known better.
Well, my thing is, did you go through their plan and write down all the things that were on there and, or off of there?
What's that, as far as, what, what plan?
Go through their plan like, like you were doing a review on it?
What, uh?
Zero monpondant.
Zero monpondant, yeah, what's there to review, what's there to see?
Right.
There's nothing there.
But there is something to see there. Did you go through it?
I did.
Did you go according to our bylaws? Did you go through it?
I don't know drainage calculations, but I did ask the last meeting, um, about the tub grinder, because we have complaints about it in another area of town and now there's a tub grinder there, so.
So, so my point is.
I don't know how anybody can complain.
How much time do you put into the planning board?
As far as what?
Study the plans and go through everything.
As much as I feel like I have to.
How much do you do?
Um, I think that I do a few days a week on it.
Okay, but, but if you send it out to a review engineer, that's his job to do that. I mean, we don't get paid for doing the, the planning board job.
Right.
So if you give it to a, a review engineer, he's gotta get paid a couple hours to go through that and write down everything he sees, that's all I'm saying.
It's pretty tough to determine runoff from piles, or it doesn't really show size or height or.
So those, so those are questions that would have come back, what other size is probably, those didn't get taken care of.
I guess another question that I would have is, is just, if they got the temporary sixty days and then another sixty days by the whole building inspector that basically kinda seemed like you didn't really, wasn't following protocol, whatever, then all of a sudden, what was such a rush tonight? Why was that such a? Cause there's, I think there's a couple conversations going on right here, one, we approved the Liddell one that we shouldn't have, without having that go out to peer review, that's on, whoever voted on that, it's my fault as well, cause my vote is on that. But then we do that and it seemed like, couldn't even finish a sentence without all the reasons why there was an answer to it, and then it's like, well, what's such a rush? And that's when I asked, oh, is there a temporary suspension? And it was, yeah, so they can't get up and running without that approval. It's like, well, there should be a site plan from now, there should be a peer review from now on. So we just established that?
Uh huh. I think we should make it part of our process, like a.
Like a non-negotiable.
Yep.
Process, because.
Well, it always has been something that's been part of the process, it's just to go overlook once and.
And tonight?
Now it did again.
And you're mad about one and not the other?
Right, I'm not getting into that conversation, but.
I, I, I think we just.
All in saying.
End this at this point, okay?
To avoid this.
Move forward.
Moving forward, yeah, but I would, I, I definitely agree with it.
Um, so where are we at? Halifax, Halifax Meadows.
So the parking spots at, um, Halifax Meadows, Leiden Lane have been removed.
You did twin lakes earlier, right?
Yep. So I guess the buses being able to go back around to, um, the rotary so that they can pick up the kids where they need to and, um, the parking spaces are gone.
Castelaine.
Anything from him?
Um, we're waiting on the selectmen to get back on us, to us to let us know if we can get the journey.
Right.
Do we have those forms yet? I think they talked about them at the meeting I was at the other night. They should be going out to us. Well, can we just do it by email for now so that we don't have to be delayed, or?
I don't think so, I think we have to go through the protocol, it's going up, the form, it has to go to the, the, okay, before we can.
I know, but where we don't have the form minutes before the form became part of the process, can't we just, like, get the?
I can ask for them.
Yeah, please, 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 please. Did you go over the minutes? Um, we have, um, November fourth minutes with. Did you go over the minutes? Um, we have, um, November fourth minutes with, um, you, Mr. Elliott.
Mm-hmm.
And, um, I know I read them, I was all right with them, I'll tell you. I'll make a motion to accept the November fourth, twenty twenty-one min- minutes as written.
Second.
Okay, the motion seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And then we have another one to do.
I need a minute on this one. What are they named?
Rick was on that one.
Will we honor December second?
Yep.
I didn't get that many minutes in that shorter period of time. I don't think we were here ten minutes, were we?
Um, I think it was till, wow, we were in here till like ten o'clock data.
Oh.
But it was, um, I think we ended the meeting about ten o'clock.
The other one was shorter.
I make a motion to accept the meeting minutes, um, as written on December twenty-second, twenty twenty-one.
I'll second it.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anybody have anything else? I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second that.
Motion seconded, all in favor?
Aye.